Okay, it's officially nine thirty and we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Epple Carter can take the roll, please.
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Here.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
The first item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad is our second. Second by Commissioner Cordiak. Further discussion. Hearing non-roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Look is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have approval of the minutes from the August eleventh County Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte, second by Commissioner Brassad. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We have one item under Chair's remarks today, the introduction of our co-chairs for the 2015 Anoka County Combined Charitable Giving Campaign. We have Andrew Precker.
Precker, yes.
Precker is joining Bobby Kaler today as co-chair, and it cannot be overstated what a challenge this is in terms of growing participation. Coming up with new innovative, fun, creative ways to raise money, and the impact that it has on our local community is staggering. We know that especially in difficult financial times, it can be more challenging than ever, but I know that each and every year, we've been able to really stretch and reach those goals, and I know that with the two of you leading this effort, I have a great deal of confidence that you will certainly meet those goals. So, thank you very much for taking the lead, and tell us about your plans for this year's campaign.
Perfect, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Board, again, just want to introduce myself. I'm Andrew Precker. I'm a Child Support Officer here in Anoka County. My co-chair this year for the charitable campaign is Bobby Kohler. She works in administration. We're pleased to be the co-chairs this year of the charitable campaign. We're going to be working with the Greater Twin Cities United Way and also the Community Shares of Minnesota. This year, we appreciate your support in the campaign. We just want to let you know how much it benefits us, knowing that you guys support us in this cause. It shows the community, it shows Anoka County that Anoka County actually cares. The kickoff, the canvasser training where we're going to be training and motivating our canvassers this year is going to be on September eighth at eleven thirty, and then the actual campaign itself's going to run from September twenty-first through October fifth, or, yes, October fifth, sorry. The theme this year is Anoka County Giving Hope. We want to make sure that that's out there, letting Anoka County know that we are looking at giving hope. And then the goal this year for us is to raise the pledges, increase it by at least five percent from what it was last year. That's all that I have. I don't know if Bobby has anything. Otherwise, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have, if you guys have questions. Otherwise, we just want to thank you for your time this morning.
Anyone have any questions?
Madam Chair, another question. I just want to thank you for stepping up, both Bobby and Andrew. It's a tough task. I know we have with us John Kreisel in the audience, and he was our co-chair a while back. It certainly takes some time out of your normal daily schedule, and we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Bobby, any new activities that we can expect this year, or some favorites that are coming back?
We're going to do the silent auction again, and so we've had quite a few donations so far come in on that. We did the Minnesota Twins, where Minnesota offered us tickets at a discounted rate, and we sold them, and we raised six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Fantastic.
And Lionel Lakes did a dunk tank and raised like four hundred dollars for that so far. But we're going to have a hot dog social and pizza social. The hot dog social, Cisco Foods has donated all the hot dogs and the funds so that we should, all the proceeds should go to Community Shares and United Way. We're going to do a pie in the face contest.
Pie in the face, yes, and the majority of you guys have agreed to that, so we thank you for that.
And if there are any who have not agreed, there is such a thing as peer pressure.
I like it.
It's all for a good cause.
It is for a great cause, yes.
So, well, thank you very much again for your leadership and your commitment of time and your talents, and we recognize that our employees are very generous with not only their, the work that they do, but really with their, with their treasures as well, and just really appreciate that because it does have a significant impact on so many nonprofits within our local communities. So, thank you for your, your work, and we know we're going to have a great year.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. Commissioner West, Management Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The items on the normal agenda are informational, but we have additional. The first items is one A through, or, one A, one through three. It's three positions. They're going from a point seven-five FTE and adding a point twenty-two-five FTE to restructure to a one FTE, and it is Victims Witness Specialist effective today.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll make the motion with just a simple correction, that number three is actually going to a point eight instead of a one point oh. With that, I'll make the motion.
Okay, so, a motion for items one A, one through three.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Uh, next item is a new position, non-budgeted in Human Services, is positions. Nine, one FTE Social Workers Grade Twelve, one FTE Case Aid Specialist Grade Ten, and one FTE Social Services Supervisor Grade Fourteen. And these positions are because of the new legislation for child protection staffing and services, and it is funded by the legislature.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Their second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item?
Madam Chair, that's...
I will go ahead and take that one, consider authorizing the County Attorney's Office and Risk Management to settle claim zero seven seven zero four, and I will move that. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then Committee Appointments, consider appointing Brian Page to the Anoka County Internal Audit Committee as a citizen member, replacing Orrin Nyhus. Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, Madam Chair.
I'll second it. Further discussion?
I look forward to seeing him on this body. He seemed to be a very capable individual. We visited with him, and we all already know that camp's an important business of our business community, and so he should be a fine addition.
Fantastic. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. We'll move on to Transportation Committee Report. Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our committee met on August seventeenth. We have one action item under the Highway Division. The committee recommends approval to increase a contract by three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to a total of four million eight hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety cents, and to make final payment to Forest Lake Contracting for the reconstruction of Foley Boulevard from One Hundred and First Avenue to Egrit in the city of Coon Rapids. Anoka County will be reimbursed for three hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars of these over, of overages by the city of Coon Rapids.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Their second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Those that have driven this stretch of road know how nice it turned out. It was a rather complex project to put together, with the post office there having to acquire some federal property, and it just became a little bit of a troublesome project for neighborhood ingress and egress. In the end, I think everybody's pleased. They get a lot of positive response from people that use it regularly. The neighborhood is pleased. Our next phase now is Phase Two of Foley Boulevard, where we'll go from Egrit down to Northdale. We're working with the city of Coon Rapids now for a joint powers agreement to see if we can make that happen. But with that, this is the tie-up of that project, and Coon Rapids had a bunch of utility work done on this stretch, and that's what the reimbursement is for, and I would submit that the same thing will probably happen on the north end of that project as well.
Further, just, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, I just have one informational item I'll bring up under Highway, is that we received a presentation at our Transportation Committee from Mendott on the I-35W, excuse me, expansion plans going north, and, and what their plans would be, whether it's a complete add-on lane, whether it's, you know, the different expansions of the lane, whether it's going to be, I forget what the term is.
Min Pass?
Min Pass. And they looked at all different options, and it looks like Min Pass is probably the option they're going to go with, and they'll be doing a, a presentation to the public, a couple of them over the next few months, so they'll have a chance to look and see what's, what's going on. But just to make the public aware that we did get that presentation at our committee, so we're kind of up to speed on what Mendott's planning.
Well, thank you, and I think it was a great presentation, and I, I know that my frustration with Min Pass over the years has been that you will be on a very congested road, and you will see literally nobody driving in that lane. And I think part of it is just the lack of information and community education about who can actually utilize those lanes. So as long as you have two or more people in a vehicle, you can use that lane for free. And so I think too many times people just assume that you have to automatically pay, or you have to be on a bus in order to utilize it. No, as long as you have two or more people, you are considered a carpool, and you can use the lane for free. So, hopefully they'll continue to ramp up that community education.
Madam Chair, I would continue with that. We requested that they step up their public information, and they modify their signs to make it understandable. Frankly, the Chair of our Transportation Committee knew almost nothing about Min Pass, and I do drive I-35W south regularly to meetings, and, and was, you know, sometimes I'd drive in it, sometimes I wouldn't, and didn't know if I should or shouldn't. I would suggest everybody, if you question it, Google it, Google Min Pass, and go to Minnesota's website and find out whether you can or can't, because the idea for those lanes is to get used and relieve congestion, and we'll have one up here. So now we're going to have a much better opportunity to understand them when they run right through our communities.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I think another question sometimes about Min Pass is how do you get whatever it takes to pay to use it? You know, I've, I'm happy to pay, but I, I've never taken time to Google to find out how I get it, so.
With that, Madam Chair, concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We'll move on to Finance Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met on August eighteenth. We came away with six action items for the Board's consideration this morning. The first action item is the committee recommends a county board-approved contract, C triple zero four four one six, to Morcon Construction of Golden Valley for the completion of the Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park Visitor Center Restroom Remodeling Project in an amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And funding for this project will be coming from the Metropolitan Council Regional Park Capital Improvement Program.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Second.
Further discussion? I would just comment that it is not just for the restroom, it is for the visitor's center. And so I know that, you know, it actually includes remodeling of both pieces of that, making it ADA compliant and so forth.
Madam Chair, and just a little clarification of that, it's a portion of the visitor's center.
Right.
It won't be a complete remodel or rehab, just a kind of a vending entry area there, near the restrooms.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, the next item is the committee recommends a county board-approved contract, C triple zero four four zero six, to the Anoka County Community Action Program, ACAP, for conducting new mattress distribution services in the Food Service Building at the Brum River Campus. The license agreement will begin August fifteenth and will automatically renew, and there is no fee for this contract.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ghamash. Further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll be abstaining. I'm on the Board of ACAP.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Abstain.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, on item number two, just for clarification, that is for new mattresses, and we're not taking old mattresses in there, so there's none of those concerns associated with that. Item number three, the county, the committee recommends a county board-approved contract, C triple zero four four two five, to clam mechanical contractors out of Burnsville for the completion of the West Courthouse nine-eleven cooling upgrade in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seven thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. The scenario that we have is we have our buildings on a main chiller system, and we set our setbacks when buildings aren't occupied for energy savings, and yet nine-eleven is still operational all the time. And so, part of the cooling requirement down there would either require us to bring our chiller back up online, which is inefficient, or install these cooling systems. And, believe it or not, at a hundred and seven thousand dollars, we're still saving money as opposed to bringing on that large system and trying to keep that going. So, this is a cost-saving measure that I believe we pay back and recall, three to five years, I think, is the payback on that. So it's, it's a smart move in terms of the amount of energy usage it costs to, to run the enormous chiller.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner Ghamash, second by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, item number four, the committee recommends a county board-approved lease agreement, one nine zero four two zero zero zero, with PNC Equipment Finance, for golf carts and gas-powered utility vehicles at Chamonix Golf Course. This lease amount is for a hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy cents, and this is a forty-eight month contract for the vehicle needs there on Chamonix.
I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
Just a note to point out that these funds come directly from the users of Chamonix, and that we're not using general tax dollars per se to fund these golf carts.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, item number five, the committee recommends a county board-approved contract, C triple zero four 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 eight, to clam mechanical contractors for the completion of the jail boiler replacement in an amount not to exceed three hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars. This is a continual project that we have in the, in the jail of upgrading various components. The jail is in need of a new jail boiler system, and unfortunately, the boilers seem to operate fine when it's not forty degrees below zero outside, and, and when that happens, then there's a huge cost in replacing. So we're trying to get ahead of what we know is going to be an eventual issue there, as the current boiler in the, in the jail has kind of reached its life's expectancy.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Cordiak, second by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion?
Madam Chair, again, just want to point out that we did research in-depth, replacing just boilers and not pumps and not other components, and just kind of piecemealing this thing together. And as Commissioner Look said, it was determined that the risk of failure of any of the other components was too high, so that doing it all at once made the most economical sense for long-term maintenance and viability.
Thank you. And I would just comment, appreciate your leadership on this, Commissioner Look, because there were numerous improvements that have been made to the jail in making sure that we're bringing things up to where they need to be, that had, I think, been kind of neglected for a while. So, appreciate your leadership in moving some of these things forward in order to, I think, get us to where we need to be. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Subaraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Ghamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, the last item, item number six, the committee recommends the county board authorize the Chair of the County Board, Chair of the Finance Committee, and the County Administrator to sign a purchase agreement, as developed by the Work Group for the Purchase Jackson Street Properties, which has, collectively has a number of parcels here, and the proposed purchase price would be approximately two and a quarter million dollars through a direct purchase by the county using the Asset Preservation Fund. And this is the property directly to our east. As we kind of plan long-term and think, think long-term, we are somewhat landlocked here in the county in terms of the properties that we own. And this property has come up for sale, and it currently has tenants in it, it's currently cash flowing, and from a, from the standpoint of what would need to be upgraded and fixed in these, in these properties, the cash flow will cover that. So it's no, not a cost in terms of ongoing expenses from that standpoint. But as we look to the future, and when we, when I say future, I mean ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, part of the goal that we've had in facilities at least is to consolidate our properties. We have properties kind of strewn about the county, and we have facilities and maintenance people that are driving out to and from all day and, and trying to maintain some of these facilities, some of which are pretty old. And as we try and think in terms of replacement, or how we accomplish the building needs that we have, trying to locate it centrally where there isn't all that travel, trying to perhaps build vertically as opposed to spreading out, trying to incorporate everything into campuses that are close by, this property, I believe, offers that opportunity where it's within close proximity to our operation.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Moved by Commissioner Cordiak, second by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion?
Just comment, Madam Chair, if I can, that, that this building here is theirs well. I think it's been here about roughly twenty-five years, roughly. We've made county government work within the structure of these walls, but obviously, the county's growing all the time, and our needs change, and so it is a great opportunity. We are forward-thinking, it's not something we're going to work on today, but we think that we can capture that property, do so at a reasonable rate, allow it to cash flow for the most part, so it's not a burden, and, and open up the doors to future opportunity for whatever services that we need to bring to Anoka County Government. Happy to participate in the committee, and it's a very interesting discussion that isn't done, a lot of pieces, but it's, it needs attention.
Well, and Commissioner, I know that when we talk about government growth, a lot of people that hear on the back of their neck kind of raises, and there's a lot of concern, and I think that this county board has tried very hard to keep the growth of government under control, but there are a lot of outside forces, federal, state legislative mandates, that impact that, and so if you take a look at, you've added, as a result of the Affordable Care Act, I think fourteen to sixteen, maybe twenty positions in economic assistance. We've added numerous positions in social services for min choices, and now today added numerous positions for child protection. And so, there are a lot of things that occur outside of our control, and we need to make sure that we are being proactive in planning for the future in order to respond to that. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, and also from a building standpoint, we've, we've been working very hard to try and plug people in at various different places. This building is enormous, but we have filled it out quite a bit, and even to the extent of working with a hoteling concept where you have a workspace when you're here as opposed to an office when you're here, or a cubicle when you're here, because we're trying to fit as many people in as we can. And I think that this gives us that opportunity to, to expand somewhat in terms of what's necessary for people in their workspaces to be efficient and effective at their jobs, so.
Madam Chair, and as a point of clarification, this action today is simply allowing us to enter into a purchase agreement. It by no means is the final step in the process, and just, it's getting us started.
Yeah, absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Look and Ghamash.
And I know that, just kind of jumping on what you had said and following up on that regarding the growth. And I know that, just kind of jumping on what you had said and following up on that regarding the growth, we're still seeing a lot of growth in, in the county, in cities like Blaine where your homes are being built and Andover and, and many of the northern suburban parts of Anoka County is continuing to grow and will continue to grow from all indications. So yes, the county is going to require to provide more services in certain areas. Yeah, Columbia Heights and places like that aren't growing as, as much, but up in the northern suburbs, part of the suburbs here, they are growing quite, quite fast now as the economy's improving. So not only are we seeing some government growth, as you indicated through a couple of different recent changes, but we're going to see just population growth and it's going to continue. And we need to be prepared, I know all the cities get prepared for the same type of thing by buying up property when they need it to grow their public works, buildings and that type of thing, but we need it here as well. So having it in a central location is nice. It's more efficient and I agree with Commissioner Look that it helps reduce some other costs of traveling throughout the county, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamash. Further discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte. Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, the rest are for informational items and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We have a number of items on the consent agenda and unless someone wants to pull something out separately, I will move approval.
Thank you.
For roll call vote?
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under social services, this is really part of some of the work that we did earlier in the agenda with approving the additional child protection positions. As part of that funding, we want to recommend that the county board expand provider contracts for child protection support services with some of those additional dollars coming from the state allocation. And then to consider recommending the county board amend the Vulnerable Children and Adult Act to reflect the additional state allocation. So I will move items two and three. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote?
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is to consider recommending the county board submit a statewide health improvement plan, SHIP grant application for the period of November first, 2015 through October thirty-first, 2020 to the Minnesota Department of Health with grant funds in an estimated amount of one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the first two years of a five-year grant period. And as many of you may recall, over the years, when this program first came forward, I can tell you we had a lot of questions and concerns and continued to reevaluate as we looked at it. The next time that the application period came up, again, Jerry Soma, who was division manager at the time, will tell you that I had a lot of questions and concerns because I wasn't necessarily seeing any real measurable outcomes and didn't seem to be necessarily the activities that were sustainable. And that was really supposed to be a requirement of the grant, was that you really build an infrastructure and that those things were sustainable. It wasn't that it was going to automatically be funds that became a new program to go on forever. So the last time around, we chose not to apply because we didn't feel as though the SHIP grant was necessarily delivering measurable outcomes and didn't seem to necessarily be meeting some of the needs that we believed were out there. Over that time period, when the new grant application came out, we anticipated that it was coming out after it passed this legislative session. Took a lot of time to go out to the community. I appreciate the hard work and effort of, you know, Laurel and her staff, Cindy, Caesar, a lot of work there in going and really holding focus groups with a lot of the community nonprofit providers to get their input as to what the priorities were, brainstorming ideas as to how we could really meet some of those needs within the community. And I think that came up with a product that is definitely different, have received definitely some pushback from the Department of Health. They would have liked to have seen us add numerous staff. I think they wanted us to add not only the full-time SHIP coordinator, but at least five more staff. That doesn't necessarily meet the goals that we have. That seems like we're not necessarily using the dollars for what they were intended, which is really direct service in order to look at, how can we change some of the behaviors in the community and really accomplish the goals? So what we came up with was why not build upon the expertise of the community providers that we have? We have an incredible nonprofit community and they have a lot of expertise. So rather than hiring people to try to learn about what exists in our community or reinvent the wheel, let's really build upon that because I think it gives us a much better starting point. And I think that it's an innovative model that I hopefully can help to deliver some great outcomes. So some of the areas that we're looking at working in, and there are certain requirements, but some of the potential partners that have been identified are senior centers, some of the homeless shelters, food shelves, family table providers, foster care providers, the Mental Health Directors Network, Crestview, the Lee Carlson Center, really looking at that holistic model of not only meeting the mental health needs, which we do in other areas, but then also looking at the wellness piece and the exercise piece as well. Healthy eating and active living, looking at continuing to work with Columbia Heights and Fridley School Districts, but also St. Francis School Districts, who many times face the barriers of being really distant from access to a lot of the services that exist within, within our county. And then looking at working with school districts and other workplace providers, so Columbia Heights and Fridley School Districts and St. Francis, but then also looking at how can we work with different population groups as well? So people who are developmentally disabled and maybe face some mental health challenges in achieve and in rise and also working with their employees as well. So I think that, again, we've come up with a little different approach and it's something that we will continue to evaluate and I'm sure the Department of Health will be watching very closely. But I'm really excited about this opportunity and the way that it's been structured. And I think that a lot of our providers within the community are really excited and I know that even some of our staff within public health in going through this process have said, wow, I learned about a resource I didn't even know existed in our community. So I think it could prove to be a great model for the state as they move forward with SHIP. So excited about the opportunity and appreciate the creativity of everybody involved and their willingness to step back and really take a look how we could not only meet the goals of SHIP, but also be in line with the vision that this county board has. So.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would just like to comment first that, thank you for your leadership on this. It's an arduous task to dig into this and understand it and then to go beyond that and change it. I think this will be a statewide change. I think once they see how successful this program can work with measurable outcomes with existing partners, I think they will be, the state will be grateful for your leadership as we are here. And I think, I mean, they'll be proud to be a part of SHIP, knowing what it can do here in Anoka County.
I have a motion, Madam Chair, I'll move it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And just also want to thank Commissioner Brassad for her leadership in this as well. And forgot to mention, Extension Services will also be a partner in this, which again, taking advantage of their expertise and the research that they have, I think is a great opportunity. Commissioner Brassad.
Madam Chair, you did a great job summarizing what we've been working on, but I'm really excited about these partnerships and utilizing this, the SHIP dollars in this way. Our staff has done an incredible job, lots of meetings, to find a way to make this work. So I'm very appreciative of Laurel and Lori and Cindy, Caesar, in this thinking out of the box, making sure that every dollar is being spent as efficient as possible to meet the goal. So it's pretty exciting.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote?
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Job Training Center, consider recommending the county board accept the Minnesota Pathways to Prosperity funding from the Department of Employment and Economic Development in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand from July first, 2015 through June thirtieth, 2017.
I'll move it.
Is there a second further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Schulte, I was.
I had the opportunity to meet with our lieutenant governor and to accept this check per se over at the Workforce Development Center. It was a good day. We had a good opportunity to tour the center, see how it works. And we had many effective staff members who helped put the grant together and walked through the area and explained to the lieutenant governor how it works and, and how effective Anoka County's workforce center is. We also had a couple of recipients who have gone through the program and have gone from receiving assistance at Anoka County to be very active participants in society and dropping off assistance and now having good full-time work because of their attendance through our workforce center. And Lieutenant Governor Tina Smith was able to see that, understand it, and embrace Anoka County for it. With that, receive three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to continue the great work.
And we do have incredible staff at the workforce center and just appreciate all their hard work and effort. And they really have always looked at how they can think outside the box and deliver incredible services and helping people become self-sufficient, so.
And Madam Chair, I would be remiss in not recognizing two of our real partners here in the Community College and the Technical College. They both have their customized training divisions where they build training for the needs of our manufacturing sect within our community. And, and that's where a lot of these workforce people get placed and they get placed into these programs so they can come out with a known job, place to go and have a career, not just a job.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
I just can't help but comment that those served our needs for many years, but that Blaine campus has been a magnet of political interest statewide and beyond for years and years and years. When you think about the diversity of tenants that are there that are commonly related and uncommonly related, delivering services to, to, to commonly to those in need in one form or another, it's just been a remarkable experience. We added a floor a number of years ago. It serves us well, it serves the community well, and everybody knows where it is.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. And with that, roll call vote?
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then the final item is Resolution 2015 HS eighteen Economic Assistance Bill. And I'll offer that resolution. Further discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote?
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that completes my report. Moving on to Intergovernmental Community Relations Committee Chair Report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Due to scheduling conflicts, we weren't able to meet, but there is one item that as chair, I would recommend the county board adopt Resolution 2015 IG zero four, Resolution accepting, accepting funds from the State of Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs for the County Veteran Services Office, enhancement grant program in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
And Commissioner, is that an offer of the resolution?
That is.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote?
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that completes my report.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to Property Records and Taxation Committee Report. Commissioner Cordiak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. From our last meeting, everybody was in attendance. There were, I think, three items that required our consideration. One of them was a contract which we'd like to engage in with our elections unit regarding a resolution, our joint powers agreement supporting our efforts to work with school district thirteen, which is in my backyard, Columbia Heights, as they attempt to fill the vacancy. They obviously want to use our equipment and techniques and ballots and so on. It's been done at right at school districts around the county at different times and for different reasons, but I would like to offer that resolution, Madam Chair. No, it's in action now. I'll move it.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote?
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number two is Resolution 2015 PRT three regarding establishing supervisor districts in Anoka County Soil and Water Conservation District. Anybody want to comment about that today? Chris Lord? You might. Just outline, this is coming as a result of statutory changes, which required them to reformulate themselves. I think they spent a great deal of time, maybe Cindy, you can just frame the discussion, but we all support it. It's pretty straightforward, but it is a change for this entity and we do all see it on our ballot. Cindy?
Well, I'm Cindy Reichert, the Anoka County Elections Manager, and I have Chris Lord here from the Soil and Water Conservation District. This is, this action is required by a new law that requires soil and water districts to have representative voting districts in the metro area. Because we only have five members on our Soil and Water Board and there are seven county commissioner districts, we were not able to follow county commissioner district lines exactly. So we've established instead five soil and water districts. That was done by the board and Chris, you've got some information about that, how your process worked?
Sure. My name is Chris Lord, the district manager with the Anoka Conservation District. We got the G I S data from the county and we ran through it ourself with our staff, working off of the precincts. We tried to consider natural resources, tax capacity, existing supervisor districts as they were. And in the end, I think we came up with a really solid proposal. The districts proposed are very contiguous, compact. The population variance can be plus or minus five percent. We're at about plus or minus one point two five percent. So it's very tight and pretty equitable. If there are any questions, I'm just here for questions really, not much of a presentation.
Any questions at all?
Madam Chair, on an unrelated note, Chris, you talked about using the G I S information. Just out of curiosity, did you come to Anoka County and work with our G I S staff? Or were you able to download the G I I S information and work with the applications that we have in this county in your own environment?
We have all the software ourselves. John with G I S sent us over the precinct file layer and we worked off of that in-house.
Very good. That's perfect and that's how it should work, Madam Chair. That's what we helped accomplish recently. Good.
Thank you very much. All right, is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered. Further discussion?
Chris, thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Okay, and moving on?
And Madam Chair, lastly, there are three properties that that require our attention, as I recall from our earlier conversations. Two of them are repurchase of, repurchase of land that has been previously forfeited. We're obviously and typically are glad to get them into private hands again. And the third one was a little, little alley in Coon Rapids that never should have been taxed. The bill never should have been paid. We never should have forfeited. And we should give it back to the city, so we're just kind of straightening out it, just kind of an aging old, old issue. out it. It's kind of an aging old issue, but I'll add that. I'll move item three, A, B, I'm sorry, move, yeah, number eight, three, A, B, and C.
There's a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote. Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordia.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, I'll just comment, as we probably won't comment later, but if you look at this agenda, we moved pretty quickly on the consent item regarding the homestead applications. This year, I think that for the first time, this time, for the first time, you're going to see the fire incidents. We recently changed our county board policy to include the fire as well as homestead abatements. That's listed here. You'll see it again and again now, but obviously we never turned them down, and it's part of that same process, so we just married them together. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, and appreciate your suggestion to bring that together so that we can streamline that process, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Moving on, the Public Safety Committee Report. Commissioner Brassad?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on August 18th, and we have four action items. The first being, the committee recommends approval of Resolution 2015-PS-08, accepting dedicated donation from Slim's Motor Clinic in the amount of $100 for the CAST program. That's the Community and Sheriff Together program.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll make it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Gamasch. Further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote. Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordia.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends approval of 2015-PS-09, accepting dedicated donation from Marie LeVang in the amount of $1,000 to assist in the purchase of a dog for the K-9 unit.
I'll move it.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote. Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordia.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends approval of Resolution 2015-PS-10, authorizing participation in the 2016 Toward Zero Death Enforcement Grant.
Is there an offer of a resolution?
I'll offer that.
Resolution's been offered. Further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote. Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordia.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends approval and execution of the 2016 law enforcement contract with the city of Ham Lake, which the city agrees to pay the Anoka County Sheriff $1,028,683 for services rendered towards their sheriff's contract. Contract includes 36 hours of daily patrol service and 24-hour call-in general services from the sheriff during the term of the contract. And I'll offer that.
Right. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Commissioner Cordia?
Expanses old contract or renewal? In fact, the many contracts that we have during the Ham Lake is...
Renewal.
Been discussed, yeah.
It is a renewal for the 2016 calendar year.
At the same rate, at times, hours?
I believe the hours have not changed. Is that correct, Sheriff?
Aye.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing done. Roll call vote. Commissioner Cordia.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And with that concludes my report.
Hey, is there anything else to come before the board? If not, meetings adjourned. Thank you.
We'll have regional rail right after this, so five-minute break or so.
Thank you. Did I not? Good. Yeah, sometimes you can't tell. No.